All right, you guys, let's call our meeting to order, please. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll call all board members are present. We do have proper notification of an open meeting. Our first action item is recommendation to approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2019 regular board meeting and October 29th, 2019 special board meeting.
Make the motion.
We'll motion in a second. Any question on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next action item is the resolution to approve the bill list.
Make the motion to approve the bill list.
Second.
And a second. Any question on the bill list? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication and comments from the public? Bob, you're up.
Again.
Three minutes, Bob, three minutes.
It won't take three minutes. It's combinations. Back in May of this year, a student by the name Allison Benner came in front of you to propose TARS teenage Republican students to form a new club here at Arrowhead. It's been approved. I want to thank you for all approving it. I want to give her commendations for going forward with this. I'm sure, I know my son's school schedule is hectic and to take on a project like this of heading up a club at Arrowhead has got to be a big undertaking. So, I give her big kudos for doing that. And I want to thank her and I want to thank the school, board, and administration for approving her club here at Arrowhead.
All right, moving on, superintendent's report. Laura.
And the majority of the school board report will be done by Donna Smith, our Director of Technology and Library Services, and Sue Casetta, our Director of Learning, and Adam Bolt, our Directors...did I say students services?
Director of Learning.
Director of Learning, Student Services. No, I just started thinking, I called Sue the wrong title.
They know what you're up to.
So Donna is going to start us off.
All right, so we did this somewhat together. We collaborated on Google to create a presentation for each night. So, our integrated technology goals are grounded in national standards of technology leadership within schools, so we support teaching and learning, support communications, provide data management and privacy, promote and provide robust network and connected devices, and provide leadership while working with teams. So, supporting teaching and learning, of course, we support a variety of systems which help with teaching and learning from Canvas to Google to Skyward, all the big systems and everything that's connected to it. But within the library, my library staff are promoting reading, so they're really working on measuring whether or not their promotions are working. So that's my challenge to them this year is how are you going to know if this is working? Are they checking out the books that you're promoting? They say that their toilet talkers are doing really well, so we're going to see how those are going. And then, teaching research skills obviously is important, so using good information, finding good information, and our tech integrators go into the classrooms and integrate that. Teaching social media and digital citizenship, providing new tools, so Newzella is newly connected to Canvas and they are providing the support for that. And then, providing PCT opportunities and tech tip email this year. So, supporting communication, we're implementing website improvements and updates, we're always trying to update that area. Supporting the newsletter tool, campus monitor support, so those monitors that you see around campus, we get the Chromecast for that and set those up. Providing input through the Speak Up survey, so it's not just us pushing out information, we're trying to get back information as well. And enabling teachers to connect parents to Canvas. So, this year, we enabled a new tool that we can within Canvas so that teachers can add those parent codes and give them to the parents so that they can connect and become observers in Canvas. So, providing data management and privacy, very important. Connecting Skyward to other systems, so Sugeato takes lead on a lot of this. Supporting data mining, we have a lot of people who want to pull data so that they can improve their programs, so they go to Sue a lot of times and she helps them pull that information. Managing state reporting and ever-changing process. And administering login management with those. And then, supporting food service. You forget that food service also needs updating and doing things on, so we're trying to get them online now rather than using a program that's here. And then, promote and provide robust network and devices. So again, administering logins is always a struggle. We were just talking at our meeting today, you know, how can we do a one roster? How can we improve this a little bit more? And then, designing and applying Wi-Fi improvements. Jeff, this summer redesigned the Wi-Fi networks to improve the public and the guests so that guests don't have to have multiple logins in order to log in during the day. If you're a guest here, you have one login rather than several. And then, executing infrastructure upgrades. We're going over our five-year plan right now, seeing where we are at. Of course, access points have now changed to new types of access points, so we have a few that are two steps behind, so we need to really work on upgrading those over the next few years. Managing equipment and implementing Macintosh management system, which Nate Trader is taking lead on this year. So, some of our goals that we're working on will be worked through a variety of teams. So you can see the teams on the right. The IT team, I meet with weekly, we talk about things that we're working on and also things that we want to start working on. One of our goals this year is to develop an IT crisis preparedness plan. So what happens if, you know, what if the internet goes down, the line is cut, what are we going to do? You know, what if there is a data breach? What are our steps in that process? So, we're going to go over some of those things. We're also going to go over that the tech advisory team, so those are a lot of teachers and students. So they're going to have to talk about what are you going to do if this happens? If school's on, there's no internet, what are you doing? So, and updating our technology plan. So last year, the tech advisory team brought forward recommendations for a plan, and so I'm going to take that plan back to them and talk about how we might tweak this plan a little bit, and then talk about moving forward, what some of those goals would be. We're supporting digital literacy through all of our plans, obviously, but also in preparedness for investigating virtual learning plans. So, the state is really kind of pushing virtual learning plans right now. We just want to take a look and see what's out there and how we can best prepare for it, if that's a road we want to go down. And that's going to take a lot of digital literacy from both our teachers, our students, as well as caregivers and parents who are watching the kids during the day and making sure that they're getting online during that day. And then, a lot of the other teams are consulting with these plans and goals for this year as well as providing us input and feedback. Any questions?
What's a toilet park?
Oh, it's the bus. It's just a little promotion that sits on the wall of the door of the toilet, so while you are in the stall, you have something to read.
I thought maybe he was talking back.
Yeah. In the future, could be a goal.
So, I've been reading a lot recently, mostly because I have a friend who struggled at a Fortune 500 company with ransomware that the company didn't think was ever a possibility in their world, and turned out it was. And they took what I consider to be the honorable route, which is, you know, do whatever is necessary but don't ever pay the ransom. And the company's fiscal year was destroyed by it, which is amazing. I mean, hundreds of billions of dollars washed away. I assume we worry about that and we've got lots of smart kids with computers that are in our system every day. Aren't we really worried about ransomware being a threat to Arrowhead High School?
Well, we have firewalls and other protections for that. We also keep everything up to date. We make sure everything's patched in a timely manner. We were just talking about Tuesday Patch Day or something, that he was trying to make sure that he had something on his calendar and he's like, "The second Tuesday is not always the second Wednesday, so I have to set it in my calendar to do this." And I'm like, "Okay." But he always patches and makes sure where everything is up to date. Also, our devices, not that this is always the case, but our student devices are internet-based. They're not going into our servers. And so, much of our stuff is cloud-based, so then, we rely on those systems to be protected and make sure that those companies are reputable companies so that they're not getting, you know, affected by those. But for the most part, our kids aren't logging into our servers here, so they're working off the internet. So that helps a little bit.
Donna, from the internal standpoint, it's not necessarily as much as a student record, oh yeah, student records, but county records, personnel records, all that cast stuff, types of work, pretty well backed up, redundant.
Yes.
Anything such as a hot site or anything of that nature? Have you ever looked at something like that?
We have a backup system that we use, but for our Skyward student information, that's housed at IS Corp. and they have their own disaster recovery plan that we just looked into, so that was, we don't, they would have a backup and then we would get their backup from them.
Sure.
Thanks, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you for the new computer.
Okay, so for the areas of teaching and learning this year, you might recall, for some of you who joined the all-staff welcome-back session, we kind of reminded everyone in the organization that the focus plan work continues, that we have our enduring goals in those blue parts of the circle there. And most of what I'm going to discuss in terms of focus for the 2019-2020 school year will come out of the upward left-hand quadrant, which of course, preparing students for life at your high school. And essentially, some of the things that I'll be talking about really are teams, there's the teaching and learning team, the academic career exploration team, and all the staff that work on that curriculum, the professional development team, we have a structural coaching team, mentors who help our new teachers improve their practices as they join our organization. So everything I talk about is in Suke Ceta, right? Everything is all team-developed. Our administrative ODT team is a big part of bringing a lot of this work forward. So, in preparing students for success beyond high school, one of our areas is to improve our teaching and learning support for teacher goals, curriculum, and assessments. One of the activities that our teaching and learning team took a look at this year as a team, but that our members take a look at every year, are the student learning objectives and the professional practice goals of our teachers. They vary widely, but broadly speaking, our teachers are working on a lot of skill development within their disciplines. We've talked already as a board, we've talked about discipline literacy strategies, many of our departments and teachers are working to improve our students' ability to read, write, speak within disciplines, that work continues. Soft skill development is a big part of the student learning objective and professional practice goals of our teachers this year. So looking at the employability skills, how to measure that, that's connected to academic career exploration work that I'm going to talk about in a little bit. And a lot of what Adam, I think, is going to reference in a little bit, our teachers are concerned, and we're talking a lot as a staff about the mental health of our students and how that drives academic performance, and kind of paying attention to some strategies this year that will, it's not all about the drill and kill and math or the practice that they do for reading, but it's what's underneath that and what helps students succeed. Teachers are looking at things like empathy and mindset development as part of their goals for the year. So, as a teaching and learning team, we're looking, how do we support that? How do we provide the professional learning? Donna takes lead with the professional learning team. Our coaches, instructional coaches, take a look at those goals and say, "How are we providing support for teachers so that they're finding success with students in the classroom?" So although those goals are very different, those are some broad-based understanding of things our staff are working on to improve student achievement at Arrowhead this year. Along those lines, to prepare students for success beyond high school, one of the strategies, and this is a lot of writing on here, but we're really looking at expanding and evolving our academic career exploration. Adam takes lead with this as well. Brenda King takes extraordinary lead. Thomas Stuber, one of our counselors, is heavily involved in a kind of small teamwork that goes out to larger teams to investigate. I mentioned this to the curriculum committee of the school board in our last meeting, that the team and staff members are going to be looking, we're going to be looking to investigate ways that we're developing regional pathway development in certain areas that are approved by the state of Wisconsin, we're able to say, "These are courses that fit a particular industry need in our state." So for example, we've discussed in front of the board many times, our commitment to STEM and manufacturing and engineering education, career and technical education. We'd like to be able to identify a sequence of courses that helps students know exactly beyond high school what that pathway needs to look like if they're looking at entry-level positions, they're looking at four-year college and some more professional positions. We are trying to set a pathway, literally, a ready-made academic career plan for students in pathways that the state of Wisconsin said we're in dire need. Health science is another area, nursing, for example, I know we've discussed this before, if we have pathways for students and we can see them, they can see those pathways, the theory behind it, at least from the state of Wisconsin, is students will, it's like you build it, they will come. And so, we're looking to, as a staff, to say, "How does our scope and sequence of our programs fit within some of that regional pathway work?" And then, what are some other ways that we can use career clusters to help students see like drive and passion in areas of interest that'll lead to further study after high school? So that involves the entire staff, that involves, it's an exploration right now. I told the curriculum committee, "This isn't something I'm going to present to you at the end of the year, it's probably long-term," but we need to be thinking about the aspect of how this might help our students focus on their post-high school plans. So that's the way we're evolving. Ongoing exploration of assessment of soft skills and employability skills, these are things like problem solving, taking initiative, collaboration, showing up on time, turning things in on time. All the things we know are really important for any professional. We want to be able to build in some way of providing the feedback in a systemic way here at Arrowhead, so exploring some strategies to do that, improve that process. We're advancing career and technical education, I'm using the phrase all year, like, "This is the time for CTE to shine." Lots of support from the state of Wisconsin in career and technical education, that's your business, marketing, technology and engineering, family and consumer education areas. We're conducting as part of a study that we received Perkins, Carl Perkins federal grant money, and that was just renewed by the federal government this summer. And in the renewal of that grant, we had to be able to conduct what's called a comprehensive local needs assessment of our CTE program, which we could do some things, we have the data, we go, "Okay, we complied, we're good, we've done what we need to for the grant purposes." But the commitment by the career and technical education departments to really take a deep dive into the quality, size, scope, and opportunities that we are providing, things we maybe should be providing, that we're not, and make that as part of a comprehensive CTE plan. We kind of made the decision, we're not just doing this to comply with the grant, we really want to take a look at what's out there and what we need to maybe be looking at differently. I know I recently got an email from a member of the board talking about a construction pathway, and so that'll be part of it. Are these things students would be interested in? We'll be pulling student focus groups, parent focus groups, industry and business partners, and kind of asking them to give us feedback on our CTE program so that we can continue to build forward. And of course, we want to continue to evaluate the entire academic career exploration effectiveness, you know, getting feedback from our graduates, getting feedback from our current students about the effectiveness of the way we're delivering some of this information to them, which comes in a variety of formats, including homeroom with their counselors, activities with their teachers, and hope that we can continue to build upon what's been a nice foundation for getting this work rolled out the last four years. The other area of our teaching and learning focus is preparing students beyond high school and the other quadrant that was in the enduring goals of the focus plan to foster and nurturing positive learning culture. We have a team across the organization of teachers, counselors, administrators, who are taking a look at investigating the way we provide student supports, academic and social supports here at Arrowhead, and we're investigating models, frameworks, structures that may improve that process. We've improved, we've built in some kind of short-term, small improvements, and the feedback that we're receiving from staff so far is, they'd like us to continue to investigate some other frameworks. Some school districts, for example, I'm not saying this is the direction we're going, but some school districts have built-in resource periods, all students are free at the same time their teachers are free to get the supports they need. This isn't just for struggling students academically, all students oftentimes need to find ways to get questions answered, to get feedback on things, and so we just want to make sure that the structure is at Arrowhead, we have a lot of unique pieces to our structure, a ten-period day, two-building campus, et cetera, but are there better ways by which we can make sure we are supporting all students and their academic needs and other needs as well? So, a team of about 14 or 15 folks are investigating, researching best practices, will probably be doing some school visits and making some recommendations at some point, perhaps at the end of the school year, that's the ball, and then, not necessarily for implementation even in the next school year. But I think it's, we feel pretty positive about the feedback that we've gotten from staff and in terms of the process we're going to use moving forward. In fact, one of our upcoming staff meetings is likely on the topic of supporting all student learners. So, those are some of the action plans we put in place to make sure that we are addressing all of our students' needs. And last, this is maybe more, so I mentioned, all the teams that have a huge impact, a lot of time spent in teaching and learning realm is on ideas. And so, although I could talk about all the great conversations I get to have every day, we get to say like, "How might we?" a lot. We're always looking at continuous improvement at Arrowhead. We recently answered questions from Milwaukee Journal Sentinel about our school report card, and we really want to make sure that we're not just chasing ACT scores, that we have rigorous, interesting, engaging, relevant learning opportunities at Arrowhead. And I'm telling you, the conversations among our staff members about how we do that in elective departments and core curricular areas happen every day. And then, it's bringing all the people together to have conversations about, you know, how does this impact one program or the other? But in music, we're having some really great dynamic conversations about music education in the future, we can go ensemble-based, non-ensemble-based. We're having some great, I think, we're going to get to a good place, but a lot of our math discussion about math placements from theater schools to high school, how to transition students to continue to have rigorous math scope and sequence and opportunities are happening. We're meeting with science teachers in the theater schools to talk about science program, K-12. So those are just some kind of examples that get at preparing students for beyond high school, the efforts that are there to try to make sure that Arrowhead remains, that our students remain successful beyond high school. So the "How might we?" and ideation and innovation still is part of our goals every year to make all that happen. Questions? Not me, the team. Adam, you're up.
All right. So, exciting stuff in student services this year. We're looking at our transition services as special education staff, starting with the vertical alignment of services. So, we think vertical alignment in education, we're looking at like for math, that would be like how Algebra builds so that you go into geometry, so that you go on to advanced algebra. With our transition services and the vertical alignment, right now and for years, we've had a lot of great opportunities for students. And students kind of picked and choose, and families picked and choose, like what they wanted their students to be involved with. What the team's working on now is having, so these experiences build on top of one another, and really starting at the, okay, why would a student take advantage of this transition opportunity? What skills would we want them to learn from that? What is our theory particularly on that this transition service is going to give for these students? And then, once you reach a certain benchmark in that, you would go on to this one because this transition service has an added component to it, right? So, one quick and easy way would be like Cafe Arrowhead, where when you're in Cafe Arrowhead and you're a student, you're interacting with staff. So staff comes in, they order their lunch, you give them their lunch, and that's the interaction, is you're working with a very, you know, nice group of people that understand your disability area, very nice and patient with you, and that's one transition service that you can be involved in. Then, if you think about vertical alignment with that, the next step up could be our Walling Grounds Cafe up in North Campus, where the environment's not as controlled, it's a little bit more hectic in between the bell period, and it's not just staff coming in, it's students ordering a bunch of different drinks, so it's not as prescribed, so it's a little bit tougher. And then, on top of that, we would have going on the community and getting a real-life work-based experience. So, that's how it could go, we're still those talks of how that would exactly play out, but that's what we're looking at doing, what we're talking about with vertical alignment of our services. Reconfiguring the services for students with intellectual disabilities and moderate severe autism. Bringing Gina Ray onto the team after John Howe retired this year gives us an opportunity to really look at our services and see how we might want to change things. Right now, and historically, students with these kinds of disabilities have been at South Campus for most of their time. They have gone to North Campus for some of their classes, but we haven't had anybody housed up in North Campus. So looking at between Gina Ray, Mary Shaw, and a couple of our other staff members up at North Campus, how might we best serve the students with these disability areas and open up a broader array of classes and experiences to them in a more inclusive environment with core academic classes? So, the vertical alignment of services dovetails really nicely with that reconfiguring of services for students with intellectual disabilities and moderate severe autism. Those are two main focuses in terms of transition services. One that we have kind of on the side, and our intention was to go slow, but we've gotten a lot of great feedback in this area, is we feel, and I think it bears out, that students and sometimes students' families shortchange themselves in terms of what their skills actually are and what career they might be able to hold down when they get out of the high school environment. So, what this typically looks at, or what the way that we've described it and thought about it, is a lot of our students traditionally have found out if they've gotten jobs at like Pigly Wiggly or Culvers, those kinds of jobs in the past. Meanwhile, we keep hearing that there is a high need in the manufacturing realm for workers, there's high need in the trades and high needs in the health career. So far, we've worked with our special, or I'm sorry, our regular education CTE teachers talk about some of those manufacturing jobs because they have a lot of connections in the community with their business partners, and they've told us, "Here's the skillset that the students need." Business partners have told us, "We just need people that can show up on time, pass a drug test, and we'll teach them anything they need to know." We're like, "Well, our guys can do that, our guys and girls can do that." It might be the other piece that there's a struggle with, but from what they've told us, those are can-do jobs for our students with intellectual disabilities. So there's kind of like this cusp of students that have maybe some higher functioning intellectual disabilities, maybe some more severe like learning disabilities that shortchange themselves in going on to the work world. What we're looking at doing is trying to open up the world of like the manufacturing trades and health careers to them, because what we're finding is the descriptions of some of the jobs in, the entry-level jobs in those industries are things that our students, we believe, would be able to do just from what we've known of that population. So again, getting them into careers that have more upward mobility, that would have benefits tied to them, and retirement would be a huge gift for our students. And really, over the past two weeks, it's gotten a lot of traction, so we're going to start looking into that a lot more heavily this year into the future. But that one kind of sprung up with us on how fast enough people were wanting and willing to move on it. Another big area of focus for us in special education is the movement of co-plan to co-serve. Traditionally, in the past, a lot of our support in class has been delivered under a co-taught model, where you would have a class, talk with a special education teacher and a regular education teacher. What this model moves to is having all students served by all teachers, and the thought here is that you embed a teacher in a core academic department so that that teacher has an in-depth knowledge of that content and has a lot of contact points with all the teachers that teach those courses, so that then we're supporting all of our students that struggle within those courses with all teachers. So any teacher can have any kid, it doesn't matter, we're able to support them through the conversations and pre-planning jobs that we would do in those classes. And then, our special education teachers are still in classes with regular education teachers to help learn and get a good understanding of what goes on, what the expectations are for the students, and modify work. for the students and modify work, but it's not, it's not just like this is the only class that is supported and that you're able to modify readily. What that is going to do is it's going to increase support for all students and for our teachers that require, you know, ongoing professional learning as our student population keeps changing, as demands keep changing. It's going to increase treatment schedules because before with our co-talk classes, if you needed support, you had to be in this class, this section, and sometimes with our Singleton classes like Fire, Band, some of our other ones, then they weren't able to take those classes, so it's really going to make it, free them up in it. Some really hard choices we had was with math at times too, like when there was only one section of a specific math class offered, and we had to choose which one we wanted. Right now, we're piloting this with our biology teachers and Stacy Arnett. It's going very well right now. The teachers are liking the amount of support that Stacy's able to give them, helping out troubleshoot student situations and also the academic needs for them. And we're going to be ongoing planning this throughout the year for an increase in going to this co-plan to co-serv model. Might be full vote next year, might be 75% of the way there, but we need to see what we're ready to take on. And then, the last piece is really with our pupil services staff, studies and counselors. Both North Campus and South Campus are piloting tune and group interventions this year to be done on a rotating scheduled basis. This is going to make us much more efficient as we have students that have similar mental health needs that we would be able to deliver them services in the group environment and take on more students. The rotating scheduled basis has been a big revelation for us, where instead of just trying to schedule kids during lunch, you're kind of playing roulette with when they have study halls, it's just going to be this week you miss first hour, next week you miss second hour, the week after that you miss third hour, the week after that you miss fourth hour, so you can kind of manage the load of, okay, we miss this class only once within our treatment schedule. That'll free them up a lot more, and we've had success with that model with our delivery of drug and alcohol education for students that get caught using drugs and alcohol in the community or on campus. We also are onboarding Esper. So, in the realm of finding research and evidence-based interventions for students with motivation, it's pretty barren wasteland. Esper is one that has shown pretty strong evidence of impacting a student's motivation to change, and a lot of times it's used with changing behaviors with drug and alcohol. Both school districts have started to see success in things like attendance and homework completion, which is where our counselors are looking to use it as we have our Your Choice program handling a lot of the motivational change with our drug and alcohol context. So, counselors are starting to use Esper for things like coming to school regularly, improving attendance, and then reasons for academic change. We also have a new service provider in our School Success Program this year, and that has been a huge success for us, moving over to St. Hayes, who have a very strong trauma-informed care base, has really unlocked already in our two and a half months that we've been in school, unlocked a lot of success as far as students that have been in that program where we've been a little stymied in the past, so that's been a great change for us. Any questions?
Is Esper an acronym for?
Screen to Brief Intervention RT. And the R.
Well, good stuff.
So, in the last couple of months, you heard from Greg in terms of school goals that were very culture-based. Greg, as the principal, and our two associate principals focus a lot on school culture, and now we wanted to give you an update on school goals that were related to student services, technology, teaching and learning. We have a very comprehensive school, and that's how we like to look at our students, which leads right into my next portion, and I only have a couple of slides, so if one of you could just, you have it, okay, thanks. As Sue already mentioned, at Arrowhead, we look at, and I look over at our focus plan, our goals, our focus plan is about student success, and we look at student success in a very broad, comprehensive manner. We are not just about high standardized test scores, Sue said, we don't just chase test scores. We focus on what's best for students and what success they need, success during high school and success after high school. So, of course, now we're a school, we focus on academics, but we also focus on the social and emotional wellness of students. You heard Adam talk about that. We focus on physical wellness and health, and we absolutely are focusing a lot on those essential skills, those work skills, what will students need in their workforce. You hear a lot about these. Today, I wanted to highlight a couple of things because, back to the academics, although we don't chase test scores, when you focus on student success in academics, social, emotional wellness, workplace skills, the, those standardized test scores seem to follow. So, we don't have to work hard at getting our kids to have high ACT scores, for instance, because with really great instruction and focusing on student success, the high scores come. So, some academic achievement high points that I wanted to outline today, because some of these are very recent. We do have high ACT scores. We tend to be in the top two or three percent of our state when it comes to the ACT. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, ACT scores became a standardized test in our state, so all juniors are tested with ACT. And then, also, we get the score, that's the traditional ACT score of college-bound students. Our scores are extremely high. Last year, we were at the top of the list in Waukesha County, or tied for the top of the list. We're always in the top one, two, or three school districts with ACT scores. Similarly, our advanced placement testing, we tend to be the highest year after year after year in Waukesha County, but across the state. We do really well with advanced placement testing. Those are the tests taken, that are college-level tests typically after taking an advanced placement class, which is a college course in our high school. Just released yesterday to the public are the Wisconsin School Report Cards. This year, Arrowhead achieved a rating of significantly exceeds expectations. This is heavily based on standardized test scores, but they also factor in things like attendance rate, graduation rate, closing achievement gaps, several factors involved, and I'm choosing, forgetting anything, school growth. So, we're seeing gains in our academic report card. In fact, in terms of, if you listed the scores of Wisconsin school districts, from the top best score to the lowest score, in terms of full school districts, Arrowhead, I believe, was of public schools, there are some charter schools, but of a typical public school, I think Arrowhead was fourth highest, fourth or fifth in the top five school districts. And then, if you look at just high schools alone, because there's a district report card grade and a school report card grade, in terms of high schools in the state, Arrowhead also was in the top five. So, we're doing well on that measure of achievement. A new score, a rating scale that we were uninformed about, we didn't even know existed until we got a letter that said, "Congratulations, you are one of America's best STEM high schools." This is a new award from Newsweek, and I'll just read a blurb from the letter. The stem.org organization is ranking America's top or best STEM, which is science, technery, science, technology, engineering, and math. Because we are a school that offers skilled teachers to keep up with developments in these fields, who create dynamic learning environments to engage their students. The stem.org educational research methodology uses scoring logic that takes into consideration a broad set of quantitative and qualitative data. The purpose was to determine which secondary institutions in America offer students experiences in science, technology, engineering, and math as defined by the Congressional Research Service while preparing them best for post-secondary outcomes. So, that's a new feather in our cap, we're one of America's top STEM high schools. In fact, of the 5,000 schools that made the list across the country, we're number 883. And then, traditionally, we tend to be named in the U.S. News and World Report Best High School list. The Washington Post puts out an annual list of most challenging schools, we are consistently in that list. And then, of our graduating students last year, 72% of that class earned a 3.0, 3.0 or higher grade point average. So, while we don't chase test scores, we're doing something right in that academic field. I think about public schools, if I remember correctly, public schools came into existence, at least in Wisconsin, in about, in the 1840s, early 1840s, and the good old reading, writing, and arithmetic, that was literally what they were planned for, reading, writing, and math instruction, very basic level. Now, if you think about what schools are responsible for, it's astonishing. We, in most places, we have not added days or time to the school year, to the school day, but lots of additional responsibilities for schools to take on. There's good and bad in that. I think a good thing is we're doing, we're doing a real service to our students in terms of student success. The academic features, of course, are important, but it goes way beyond reading, writing, and arithmetic, as you've heard.
The 72% that we achieved with the 2019 graduating class, is that percentage higher than what we've seen in the past, or has always been in that ballpark?
It's typically around that, that number. I don't have that list, but it's, I would say, within plus or five percentage points. I do know for, four years in a row, at least four years in a row, 50% of our students earn the honor roll status of 3.5 or higher. And then, a few more celebrations that are not necessarily academic in nature. Congratulations to the girls volleyball team for winning the state volleyball championship up in Green Bay. It was a great opportunity for me to be there, to be part of that celebration, and it was the first time in Arrowhead school history that the girls volleyball team won a state championship.
And the Vito Cowboy.
Yes. Congratulations to Deb Peridowski, our Associate Principal, who was just named last Friday as the Wisconsin Associate Principal of the Year. It's a very prestigious honor, and we're really thrilled for Deb. She's well-deserving of that recognition. And then, finally, you may or may not know, today is World Kindness Day, and certain people like to do random acts of kindness. I'll point one out here, who was caught just a few weeks ago out on the street painting one of our Arrowhead signs of brighter red, just so it would look nice. But some of our Arrowhead students also like to participate in random acts of kindness. We hope that our students are kind each and every day, but on this World Kindness Day, I thought I would give a highlight of a student video.
It's important to be kind because it makes people feel good, and it can make yourself feel good as well.
I brought my grandma candy at her nursing home. I surprised my older sister with concert tickets for her favorite band.
This week, I said thank you to all my teachers after I left the classroom, and also helped my mom make dinner.
I took my neighbor's trash out when it was freezing cold.
I helped my grandma make dinner for the whole family.
During my dad's stressful work week, I pulled all his clothes.
This week, I bought my friend a gift because she was having a bad week, and I wanted to cheer her up.
I went through a drive-through with my brother, and we paid for the person's food behind us.
So, just to highlight, it's, we go beyond academics here, we have really kind students as well.
Kind board president, evidently.
Jury's on it.
And that is my report.
Thank you. All right, well, we got a committee report, curriculum, so we didn't have a meeting, it doesn't look like, huh?
No, they just don't have anything to talk about.
All right.
It's coming, though, it's coming.
Craig, doesn't look like you had anything.
We didn't have anything to talk about.
There is no money to talk about.
We're going to schedule a finance meeting for probably early December, so look at that too.
Okay. All right, building the grounds.
We actually did something.
Very little.
I wasn't going to say that part.
Were you there?
I was there.
Okay, because we cannot do that.
With bells on. I'll tell you, zingers. Well, we talked about the Viltor property. We've got two more years on the contract, and every two years, we've been renewing the lease agreement with the Viltors as far as maintaining the property or as far as maintaining crops. Yeah, we don't get much out of it as far as the lease. It's more of a, it's more for our benefit not to have to cut weeds and that kind of stuff. Otherwise, our staff would be able to be cutting weeds down, or we'd be getting noxious weed reports from the county and have to do it or whatever, so. The issue, we decided to go ahead and lease it for $20 a acre on the first year and $10 for the second year. So, I say it's more of a, he says he's not making any money. Oh, David left. Oh, yeah, that was, I knew that was going to be David's smile. So, like I say, it's mainly just a service more for us not to have to do it than as a money-making thing. So, I also looked at the cost of having to take down the buildings and that kind of stuff in the future, because once we take over the property, we're probably going to want to be taking the buildings down, getting that property rate perhaps to sell or at least appraised at some point. Last time we had it appraised, a couple of years ago, was just slightly less than what we actually paid for it a few years back. But I think part of that's probably because of the buildings on that property, we got asbestos, we got lead, and all that kind of stuff, so. The Espina de demolition costs obtained two years ago were, you know, about $60,000 for the dairy barn, another $10,000 of the barnyard, and three silos of nine grand. Some of that's already been done, but we have a friend in the fire department that said he might be willing to burn some of those building floors. Well discussed, I think we mentioned last month, a month before, that Swallow want to, with their reconstruction going on, rebuilding over there, they want to reclaim a four-foot by four-foot of the original foundation of the buildings, of the original building, it's over on the Viltor property by the barns. And so, we, we've given them permission to go ahead and excavate that. Laura's going to work with that, Lauren, and we have to just make sure insurance is covered and all that, those bid and bid straight of things. And we're not sure what they're going to do with it yet, but it'll be interesting to have it as part of the new building. So, that was pretty much it. Our next meeting will be December 4th. Oh, it was much longer than that. It was 21.
Not according to you.
Yeah, I think you wrote the time down. Porto must have been longer.
Yeah, really.
Yes, but we had a meeting.
And then, just as a follow-up, at each of your spots, I put a copy of the letter that you approved me to deliver to the Heartland officials about our position on the Connector Road, so nothing. I emailed Ryan afterwards at the village to see if there was anything on the upcoming plant commissions or the village board, and it's not, there's nothing really moving on it yet, probably not till this, or this spring, so, but they at least know where whatever position is. Okay, nothing from personnel, policy?
Oh, we had a couple of things. Policy 15, 516 was bullying policy. It was pretty much wordsmithing to be a little bit better in line with the federal definition. The other one, 654 was administered medication to students, and it was about CBD products. So, if the students have to do it... So if the students have to do it during the day, they have three different scenarios that they have to go through. So that was kind of an update, so that we can be in line with the state and the federal. And that'll change soon, I'm sure. We'll get back to that again soon. I don't know, you got anything to add? Your report said it all.
Yeah, I would say the CBD oil or products, in fact, I read lots of legal briefs and articles, but the one, the title captures it perfectly. It's the haze surrounding CBD. Because the official Wisconsin law would say it's, it is an illegal product. But back in 2018, the attorney general at the time said CBD oil is fine. It doesn't count as being illegal. The issue becomes, in CBD products, it's THC that gives you the high. And if, if a CBD product has, I believe it's less than 3%, then it's not illegal. If it's more than 3%, then it's a controlled substance. It is illegal. CBD products, typically in oil, it's not regulated. It's not regulated by the FDA. It's not considered a prescription. And so how do you know how much of the THC is in one of these products, which makes it a challenge for schools? So what we've added to the existing administration of medication policy is essentially saying, we're not going to allow CBD products unless, unless you have apparent permission, unless you have something from a doctor saying you're taking this for medical purposes, and unless, we're not administering it. So unless the student is able to administer it on their own. This is a nice protection for the school district because if a student were to be exhibiting symptoms or behaviors as if they are high, and we test, the tests that are used by our school resource officer, you know, the little dip test kind of thing, it's just going to show if there's THC in it or not. It's not going to say it's at 1% or it's at 20%. And so they have THC in their system. We don't want, as a school district, we don't want a student to say, "But I wasn't smoking THC. It was in CBD oil, and there's nothing that says I can't have that." So we're putting the policy in to be safe for students, to protect the school district, and then as Donna said, as the law becomes more clear, we can modify that policy accordingly. We're using the advice of two different law firms, legal briefs, as well as the WASP, the Wisconsin Association for School Boards, their advice on the topic.
Okay.
Clear as mud, right?
Yes.
So let's back up and entertain a motion to approve the revised 516 on the bullying policy.
So who?
The motion is second. Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second one in this discussion, or a motion to approve the procedure for 654 administering the medication to students.
So who?
Motion second. Any questions on that?
Are the students currently using that, that you're aware of?
We don't, to my knowledge, we don't have anyone that has submitted those three criteria to, to be using those products in school.
Is that one of those, you have to be 18 to buy it too, correct?
Well, in theory, but you can go online and click a little box that says I'm 18.
Kind of like the vaping products.
Yes.
And other creative dispensaries, of course. So it's, the only thing that the FDA allows prescription for is seizures.
Right, there's only one.
How do kids know that they're supposed to submit a, a requirement, or a notification, or whatever you want to call it?
We're not putting out a notice to every student because it's, it really isn't applicable. We don't necessarily want to spark additional interest. If the question arises, we let them know. More, more likely, if someone's using a CBD product that has a very miniscule amount of THC in it, we would never know. If someone's exhibiting the high-type behaviors, then that's an issue, and then we have a policy to fill that gap.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for staying on top of all that. That's not an easy.
She has.
That's a great, that's kudos.
Sure, that kept her awake at night.
I have learned so many things as a superintendent that I never thought I'd need to know about.
For what?
CBD, lice.
All right, moving on to other reports. WASP, the only thing that Donna and I attended the regional meeting, we sat through the initial training on teacher-staff compensation. Bob Butler put that on, and then the normal meeting. So it was really, that was, the training was more just talking about some strategies that school districts are using to attract and retain.
That we already use.
Yeah. We could have taught the class.
We could have taught the class, absolutely. But they say 30 to 40% of the teachers leave in the first five years. We don't see that here, which is really cool. And they talked about, you know, how one of the things would be how our teachers have all that collaboration. We already have all that, so it was really cool. It was, we felt proud, good.
So, okay.
And Bobby, two brownies.
They kept passing them over.
Well, we put on that, that's awesome.
Parents always taught me, never leave a plate.
Right.
Eat everything on your plate. Had somebody else's. New business, thanks, Donna.
Sure. Oh, because we had a Bob, what was it?
Yeah, there was a Bob.
It's a Bob.
There's a tactic.
It's a building orientation buddy. But we already have a Bob.
Yeah.
So there we, yeah, we're very proud of that.
We could have taught that as well.
You bet.
We're not supposed to talk about this orientation.
All right, we're really getting off track.
He's really red.
Bob, you can delete that last. We have no resignations and retirements, to Donna's point. We do have some contracts for appointment and lives of appointment. Entertained a motion to approve those three.
So.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any questions on those?
Is our new boys volleyball going to be in next month? Don't we have a new boys volleyball coach?
Yeah, but they're not on board.
Oh, they're not on board yet? Okay.
It was, he was an interim coach, just for the, yeah.
Oh, he was? Okay.
We're keeping our fingers.
Yeah, we'll see.
He's going to keep that finger volleyball.
Not yet. There's been a lot of interest expressed, but the process hasn't started or into full swing yet.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve those. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next act tonight in this discussion is the 2020, 2021 school calendar for the months before, but.
I think it's great. Well thought out.
We need a motion to approve. Yes. We got a motion from Dave.
I'd second.
Tim, okay. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so anybody have any future agenda items?
I'd love to put an agenda item on, providing a little deeper analysis as to our improvements and sort of comparison over the past years versus our school report card this year. Spectacular increase. It's a wonderful spot to be in. Look at all of our feeder districts, and see one after another after another. It's, you know, fortunate to be surrounded by such great professionals who are teaching our kids, and I'd like to know how we got so good so fast.
There is no silver bullet. But we actually usually talk about a very similar, if not that, topic at a curriculum committee meeting, so we can keep you posted on when that comes up, because we wrap that into, not just the report card, but student academic achievement at Arrowhead, and also from the feeder schools coming into Arrowhead, and how that looks.
You know, I think it only goes to say that when you have one of the greatest committees here.
Oh, here we go again.
That it would just fall right into the fact that that's why.
It's really about the committee chair.
Gotta love that curriculum committee, guys.
I know, it wasn't, it wasn't that long ago that we had, and we had some improvements we needed to make because we had the lower, either lower-income families.
Achievement gap.
Yeah, there was an achievement gap there that was kind of listed on that report, current report, so.
And we still do have achievement gaps between our students with special education needs and identifications, and with the low socioeconomic, students of poverty. There still are gaps there, but they've closed at least from one year to the next. They've closed a little bit. We don't see the same racial gaps that many schools do. Our report card score last year was 82.9. I'm doing the math in my head, and now it's 89.7. It was almost a seven point, a 6.9 point increase. But I, like to Tim's point, I couldn't say, "Well, that's simply because we did this." Now, there isn't one silver bullet fix. I would just say everything you heard about tonight, and Greg's report a couple months ago. It's, it's all of that. It's everything that we do for building school success.
It would have to be, you couldn't just have one strong area and everything else going. You have to have consistency and greatness.
We can look over time and see, okay, our, our math achievement went up by 4%. Our English reading, or English language arts went up by 6%. So you could point to some academic achievement areas. The academic achievement is the highest percentage calculated into the score, and then some of those other ones are to a lesser degree. But it's hard to say, here's our one strategy that's making a big difference. Also different with this report card, that school growth score, our score was 72, where the rest of the state or the average of the state is 66%. That's about English language arts and math growth, so those are those percentages. The last two years, those growth scores weren't reported at the high school level because the ACT ASPIRE test hadn't been in place. And then it was in place, but it wasn't for enough years to consider it valid trends. So it could even be their scoring helped make a big difference for us, those seven points. Now, I did look at a couple of other high-achieving high schools to see, did they also make that type of growth? And they did not. It was a point or two. In the two high schools that I looked at, there were a couple of them that are, have a higher report card score than us. They both went up, but only by one or two points, not nearly seven. So does that tell us any answer? I don't know. Because I really was looking at, okay, the school growth, now that those scores are in there, did that boost everyone the same amount? It didn't. So, pull from that what you will.
I would just say congratulations to all.
Every one, yeah.
Big jump. Sue Adam. Greg, thank you. You guys are doing a great job.
As always, entertain a motion to leave.
The turn. The move. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bob, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.